Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell me your order. Go call.
Okay, Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
And I think Councilor Reese will be absent tonight.
Okay, we have anybody that would like to address the council public forum?
So I'm Chuck Schmicki. For those of you that don't know me, I live up on Zion Circle Drive, and I own the two buildings between the fire station and the ambulance shed. Truck sheds, we call it, are my trucks. On Zion Circle Drive is one of the three streets that you put chip seal on this year. Irwin Street and Worshe Drive. It didn't work. It didn't stick. We complained all summer that it wasn't sticking. And then they cleaned up, and tried to clean it after the first snow. They plowed it all in our yards. They supposedly came up and cleaned it out of our yards and cleaned it off the street, but you can keep getting more and more and more off of it all the time. So it's all going in our yards every time it moves the snow. Was told by Scott that the little one-inch of lay, the overlay that they put on it wouldn't last. So that's what we're left with now when the tight winter is over. So it's gonna break up again. It's a constant mess. Bill and I got into it the other day because it keeps getting in our yards. And the circle is hard to plow. They're getting better now. They use a skid loader. But they need to waste it up the snow so it's in the yards. So we all, I'm the only one here, but everybody ups their bitches because of our yards get full of gravel. It is scattered all over town. It's Clear Lake Street. It's all over. Because it's just not stuck in the streets. It's getting scattered all over. So I don't know what you plan on doing, but it's gonna be a big mess and continue to be a big mess. But if you're aware of it.
We'll have to watch it when the snow melts, see what we can do.
And it isn't just our street. It's all three of them. That didn't work. It worked on Lakewood Drive a minute years ago. You did that. But these three didn't work at all. It's terrible. You can look at all of them, and you can see the asphalt overlay. There is no gravel on top of the asphalt in a lot of places. So we're all worried and pissed, actually. The other thing I have is the sand and the salt that you put on the roads. Used to be we used washed sand that we'd walked in the roads and had washed salt, and we mixed it ourselves. Now we're buying it from the county, and it's all pretty mixed, and it has clay in it. So everybody, or I'm complaining, I hear a lot, that it tracks so bad in your garage and in your shoes and your house and your rugs. So when it dries in your garage and you're gonna scrape it off the floor in that gray spot, that's the clay. Sand won't do that. So why we're buying it from the county now, I don't know. And why we can't go back to washed sand, I don't know. But this stuff is really messy. You can watch cars go down the street and it stick to the tires. That's because of clay.
I don't know if it was a cost thing on the sand. We'll have to talk to Bill.
Way well.
It is messy. And the other thing is the amount that you put on it. You've heard this before, Tom. We are the only county that sands every freaking inch of the street in residential area and everything. We're the only county, or the only town in the county that does it in a residential area. And the other day, they were doing everything twice just to make sure they have enough. Two young guys today that lives here, not lived in Wall Lake, and he's like, "Why do they have to gravel the streets?" Well, that's what they think they gotta put on. But not way too much.
Yeah, that's because people complain, too.
And I keep hearing that, but I never hear people complain that there's not enough.
Well, I don't think they do now, but I think they did when we weren't doing it all. You know, people slip, people fall.
And even the people that used to work for the city are like, "What are they doing?" I mean, it is quite a bit. The amount of townage has to be a whole lot more than used to be. So if it's a cost factor without a used washed sand, it's gotta be a cost factor more much reviewed. Plus, that's going into storm drains. What it's doing to the lake, who knows? Nobody complains, but...
And we get, some don't like it, some do. It's pretty hard for us to get in the middle and make everybody happy.
But I do agree, I do agree that there's kind of excess. People have complained about the excess the last, I just know of two years, you know.
Right, and I'm gonna say the last two years, too. It's just so much. And in the residential areas, I don't think you need to spread it all, the whole, because the traffic will move it around in the intersections. You have a business district, you gotta do everything. Because that is slick, and that's where people are gonna get stuck coming up on the market. But it's just so damn bad, bad.
Bill's on vacation. We'll talk to him when he gets back.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Bill is?
Yep.
Well, I had a real friendly conversation the other night, so I'm not as prepared personally as they wanted to. But yeah, they are getting better about cleaning our circle with that damn circle drive we're coming up with skid loader, like I said earlier. But it's just the amount. We don't need our streets sanded, and they told us that. We used to get five without that of sanding, because there's only a handful of sand there. And now we really don't need it sanded because we got all the extra gravel that's underneath it. And you can drive on any of them three streets that they did the chip seal and see where they plowed, and you can see the amount of gravel that's going in everybody else's yard. And go around the corner, and it's all there, and everything's dry. So our streets are gonna need some. I don't know what you're gonna do. It's all happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Consent agenda, any additions or corrections?
No.
Motion to approve or second?
Second.
Go call.
Wolton.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yes.
Tom.
Okay, we have one building permit. Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Stankham.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
Moller.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do the budget request, the first one up, for the UBI Library Board.
All of our Library Board members are here tonight, and I'm going to talk a little bit first, a few comments of the state of the library. And then I'm the president of the board, and Lorraine's our treasurer. She will present the budget. All right, the library's nearly back to normal after the COVID issues of this past year. Book clubs, local book clubs are again meeting, and the talk of coffee in the monthly display items is resuming this Monday in February. And we have our, again, have our full schedule of hours. And what we still need to resume are our two children's programs, and we still do not allow children into the computer room. And we certainly appreciate the patience and cooperation of patrons during this difficult time. Let's talk a little bit about our addition. It's almost complete. We ran into problems with the PA system, but turned to Brenner's, and they delivered the equipment just last week, and they covered over half of the cost because it was more expensive than they had quoted to us. And Mayor Westergaard came in and hooked it up. We appreciate that. We're waiting for a replacement for one of the televisions, as it was broken when it was unpacked. And tomorrow, the board is meeting to determine the place of the wall art. We still need to purchase two comfortable reading chairs and lamps for reading nooks by the north windows in the main part of the main room of the library. Just this morning, I had a call from the Hanson, or excuse me, Valley Hanson, the Durst family about the public sculpture that they want to put in front of the library. They are working now with a sculptor from Dubuque. And she is going to have, this week, we'll be sending them a model, and within the next week or 10 days, they will come up here and show the board the model, and we can approve it or not agree with what they're presenting. And then we will, we'll see how the time works. I suppose maybe at your next council meeting, you can look at it or something. Be sure you approve of it. Most people are amazed when they view the size of the new room, and we trust it will be a true benefit to community for meetings. We've set a policy that we are allowing civic and charity groups, local card clubs, school-associated groups to use the room without charge. They can give us a gift of their own discretion if they wish, and I'm sure most of them probably, many of them will. Private events such as birthday parties, showers, sales events, business meetings have a donation fee of $20 for this south room, $30 for the north side, north room, because that is where the kitchenette is, $50 for both. And if a group that is outside of our community wishes to use the room, then the fees are doubled. And the mayor just mentioned tonight that maybe we need to advertise this or write an article about the paper that these rooms are now available for use. Well, as wonderful as the new addition is, the change in the library proper is perhaps even more striking. Every time I walk in, I am just amazed. Eric Hawkinson took off the top shelf of all the stacks that were in the main part of the library. The entire young adults, young adult section, fiction and nonfiction was moved to the space of the former meeting room. So now that made the library open up. It's so much more inviting, so much more welcoming. It's not cluttered. It looks, it's wonderful. It seems like it's been doubled in width, and of course, it hasn't changed measurements at all. The open space now features our new puzzle table that has the revolving top. Daryl Ishai, not constructed, remember Robbittine, is getting lots of use. We thank the city council for their gift of $30,000 and for their guidance through this building process. They've been invaluable. The total cost has been $323,269. That includes the cost of new shingles on the entire building, new and old. So it's not all the extra room. Besides the Phillips gift, we received grants of $25,000 from Sat County Endowment, $40,000 from the Carver Library Trust, $7,500 from the Rancy Trust, and over $70,000 in general local giving, including businesses and banks and so on, and small grants like 100 Sat County people that care, people like that. We also use money from the Kohli Fund. This Kohli Fund was originally given to the library as an endowment. We took some of it out to, when we brought in technology in the library for our system, and we took some of it out when we did the floor of the library, the foundation. But because it's an endowment, we can't just simply empty that fund. We're going to have to refund it to a certain extent. We have to determine how much we want to be toward this project and refund the rest of the money to that because it's an endowment. In some ways, the COVID situation helped us. We were able to close or have limited hours, and people in the library, when construction met, we were torn up and had books and shelves everywhere, all over the floor, everywhere. Many volunteer hours were given to return us to a working library. We now invite the city council to visit the library. But come in the west door. Look at the old library first. You will be amazed. And then you could exit through the handicap accessible automatic door that's on the south. So thanks again for your support. And now Lorraine's gonna present the budget.
Thank you, Jim.
Will it be allowed to have a council meeting over there?
Well, certainly. And you don't get charged.
It's gonna be fair.
Anytime, yeah. And we will have an open house as soon as it's safe, you know, for people to come in easily and whatever, yeah.
Okay, you all have a copy of the proposed budget. The Library Board would like to submit this 2122 budget for your approval. You will notice that we had to go up about $2,050. There's just three main accounts that we needed to raise a little bit. We did give raises this year, although they were little. But we were at the top of our budget on the FICO account, so then we had to add a little bit more on there. The main one that we've added, you'll see, is $1,500. And that is for building maintenance and for utilities for the big room. So that was a big chunk there, but hopefully this will work out, and it will prove to be a correct amount. Also, on the collection and development, that's the money that we used to buy the books and the magazines. And last year, we did not raise that at all because we were trying to watch expenses. So we only raised that $500 this year. So overall, the increase is about 2.85% over the budget from last year. And on the second page there, you'll see what our estimated income for the library is. And that's, hopefully, we will bring in more at the library than what we have, especially this year because we've been closed for so long. So those are just kind of general figures that we can't really spot on for. But so, and then everybody, all of our employees are listed there on the followings sheets, too, with their wages and the number of hours per year that they work at center of vacation, so time, that time to see. Is there any questions?
The council's not gonna take any action on any of these tonight. We're just gonna listen.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Just for the record, the Library Board's here. I want to commend you on the job you did on that addition to the library. I was there many times at your meetings, but you're a well-run committee, I can tell you that. You all take it seriously. Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome. Good job.
Okay, Lakeview Community Club. Jim, Linda.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for last year supporting us. And even though in light of the COVID crisis and that we didn't get to have a lot of our events, we did still do our advertising, and hopefully that helped the rest of the city. Our campgrounds were full. There were people, you know, so I hope that we had a part of that. And in light of all of this, we would again, because we hope that summer will be normal, would like to ask for an advertising budget and to pay half the salary of Jennifer and Connie. And all of this for the same total as last year of $15,000.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you to the community club for doing all the work. Okay, Al, you're up for authority. Is that Al?
Yes.
You're up. Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. Did you have the...
Yeah, so everybody would have had that, that you have me coffee today?
Well, I just moved recently back to Lakeview from the Chicago-Louis area. It's really a great town to grow up in and to return to. We elected officers in the middle of last year and started our organization. And we quickly established a goal to facilitate housing and economic development projects, present and future, for the general welfare of the citizens of Lakeview. And for tonight, I think I want to focus on the future of Lakeview. Our beginning goal was to research and document and map the vacant lots in Lakeview. There's a list of some of the vacant lots that we've been looking at. Many of these lots have been vacant for years. Due to the low property taxes on vacant lots, there is no incentive to build a house or create new housing for Lakeview. When I looked at the tax records of a lot of the vacant lots, it was $20 a year in property taxes. So there's no motivation to do anything with the land. So what we want to do is get those lots back in circulation so they can add to the housing inventory in Lakeview. And what we want to do is to acquire some of the vacant lots at a low price. You know, they vary anywhere from $5,000 to $20,000. And then resell them to builders so we get the money back. And with these lots, with houses now, they would return to Lakeview's housing inventory. And from the appendix C that Scott gave us on our first meeting, it looks like there's 549 employees of local businesses in Lakeview, but those workers don't live here anymore, or never have lived here. And Evapco, for example, at quitting time, you just see the cars head to Sat City. So we've received our 501(c)(3) status, and we actually received our first donation of $1,000 from Mary Jo Jolyn-Buskowitz. The secretary, Jackie Wallace, and I set up an account at Iowa State Bank, and so we have $1,000 in our bank account. We're asking for the town council to grant us $50,000 in its 2021 budget to facilitate housing and economic goals for Lakeview. There's several reasons that we think us having the money would be a good thing. Immediacy is one thing. With the funds behind the organization, we can react quickly to events as they come up in real time. In the recent past, some potential businesses have made a pre-commitment to come to Lakeview. But then we only lost, we lost a business to another town. And we're thinking, hopefully, if there's one thing that we could do would be to react quickly. Frankly, the other towns are acting faster than Lakeview and reaping the rewards. I think we could offer a quicker response window that might benefit Lakeview in the future. And that would even go for obtaining, you know, if we find out there's a lot that's a really good lot, it's inexpensive, we could move on it and put it into our inventory so then we could start shopping it to builders and get a house built on it. And in turn, that would benefit our inventory of housing in Lakeview. We had, we invited Brent Meyer of Evapco to speak at one of our meetings. And he specifically talked about the lack of rental homes, rental apartments in particular. He thought if we could get some affordable housing in Lakeview, we might be able to capture some of his workforce as Lakeview residents. The appendix C housing study done for Lakeview reveals that 554 of Lakeview's current labor force communities here to work while living outside of Lakeview. So that's money not being spent at our grocery stores and our restaurants and so forth and so on. If we could convert 1% of this outside workforce to become Lakeview residents, Lakeview would gain five households per year. The appendix C study projects 49 household units are needed by 2030 just to break even, just to maintain what we have right now. Of course, if we could do better and get 1% growth, we would need 117 new housing units in nine years. So that's kind of some of the problems that we're, that we're looking at and addressing with our organization. I hope you consider putting this to work. Love to go to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, Al.
Thank you.
Okay, hometown pride.
Also representing hometown pride. In the past, you have graciously supported us with $1,500 for operational costs as we're still ongoing and developing the Iowa Great Places opportunities. We would ask that you would once again give us or designate for us $1,500 to continue these ongoing projects. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Thanks for the hometown pride. A lot of the stuff in the last five years came out of the hometown pride committee. You can't blame me for all of it.
You've done a lot of work on it, Tom.
Evening. Here for the golf course again this year. Just wanted to thank you for giving us the money last year. Coupled with Wall Lake's donation helped float our vote through COVID. And we were able to pay off one of our machine notes. And we actually had another pump issue in the well out there. And so it's a revolving door with machines out there. We've got another one that we signed to purchase this spring. So just appreciate the $5,000 and hope you consider the same amount this year. Thank you.
Somebody allow me to comment?
Yes, you sure can.
I've never, I don't belong to the golf club and I've never played golf. But I know as a member of the housing committee, when we look at other towns around in Iowa, what they do to try to get people to move to their towns, a lot of them stress that, you know, that there is a golf club. And I even get memberships at the golf club and stuff like that. So I just think it's, with dealing with housing, I think it's really an important asset to have that in our community.
Thank you, Judy.
Can you give them talk about the housing trust fund?
Just, just bring this up to the council that on page 10 and 11 of your, 10, 11, 12 of your council packet is a request from the Region 12 Council of Government's Housing. So this is the housing trust fund. And for the past couple of years, we have participated in their matching funds for their big grant that they have. So they are again asking for $1,000 worth of match funds. And we've had lots of doings with Region 12 here within the past several years. And we would love to continue that.
Okay. We'll move on. If anybody still wants to stay, it's up to you.
Don't all run out.
Just want to give everybody a chance.
It's exciting.
Yeah, it's exciting, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. You don't want to see excited action?
And they're, and they're done now?
Okay, resolution 2105 is bringing the zoning variance to, Christine, it was passed the variance board, the ambulance shed.
It did go through the Board of Adjustment. They did recommend, they did grant the variance. And just real quick, it's on page 15, give you a little description what the project is. This would be a 30 by 30 addition to the, to the west side of their existing home. And this is that home there, kind of by the Hanson Society area, between the Vault Company and Lake Lumbrer. So it's just a 30 by 30 addition. Where I had circled that five feet, it's an offset, so it comes additional five feet to the front. The main reason for that is primarily aesthetics, that there's a little offset on that and it really breaks up the front. They submitted their variance application to the, to the board. It was granted largely because it's just a unique situation down there, too. It's in an industrial zone. And as a, as a pre-existing non-conforming use, they, anyway, they went ahead and granted the variance. And the council can either approve this resolution or remand it back to the board.
Make them also approve.
I'll second it. Go call.
Wolton. Stankham.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Okay, we'll read a motion to approve. Richard, stop writing to the Board of Adjustment. We agreed to do it again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yes.
Okay, we gotta set a letting date for the electric project?
Yeah, this is just officially set that bid letting date. It's Thursday, February 11th, for the, for the project that Bill reviewed with you at the last council meeting. So we got the packets ready to go, and it will go out, yeah, well, tomorrow or the next day, and ready for February 11th bid letting.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Moller.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton.
Okay, the CDVG Housing Grant Program, we approved, we got payment number six is what we need to do next.
Payment number six is we would request, request a draw for this. Yeah, just actually very small draw on this, and it's primarily for administration and some let abatement. $1,871, but since this is all, it's a big federal program, they like everything to run through the council. So if we would approve this draw and also approve the bill.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Go call.
Moller.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton.
That was both of them?
Eh, we did have a separate one to approve payment.
Motion to approve payment?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Go call.
Moller.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton. Stankham.
Yes.
I'll go through the budget preparation.
Hey, before we go too far on this, here's an update on that, on the housing rehab grant. It asked Carla for a, for an update. Construction is underway at Michelle Linders'. And she didn't have the exact numbers, but figured that they might be nearing 75% complete on that. Down at Marlon Johnson's, the project has cleared the environmental review and was put out to bid. And they would look to get the contract signed here in the near future and proceed. The other, the other homeowner who was in line to participate with this is Rebecca Peters'. And that would require an amendment to the, to the target area. And it's since said that the Region 12 had received some funding through the Federal Home Loan Bank, and they're now, now able to provide those additional funds that are needed for Rebecca's project so that the target area does not need to proceed. In fact, she said... In fact, she says that they may have extra, they may have some additional funds through this economic development. So if we know of another potential client near the target area, that we should definitely be pursuing that.
So as long as we stay near the target area, we don't have to go through that whole target thing?
Yeah. There, no surveying and everything like that. It would, it would be an amendment, a process to amend the target area if we need to, even if it's the next street over, you still need to formally amend it. But.
So do we have to go and get all the signatures like we did to get the target area?
No, that's my understanding is that it wouldn't.
So we need to, do we need to look at the people that we had on, you know, possibility list and contact them again?
Because, yeah, I've got, I've got one that certainly we, if we could, if we could work with them on this one and get them to fill out the forms, he's a great applicant.
Yeah, I think so too. I agree. I think we'll just go back to our original list and expand probably. Good job on that, Judy.
Judy's very valuable. Now we can do our budget.
All right, yeah. So just a few things to discuss as we prepare yet for, for budget work. We are going to have a special city council meeting next Monday, the 25th, which would be a review of the, of the completed budget. So we'll talk through a few of the items here tonight in preparation of that. And then we also got to work on some property tax issues. I'm on page 20, just going through these, these are our outstanding debts and, and how they are, they're paid for, the, the streets. You can see the, you still have $565,000 outstanding on that original million. That'll be paid off in '27. And that's the one, the one issuance that we pay off using property taxes. Sack Beach, general obligation, we pay that off with hotel motel taxes and, excuse me, a special assessment and some TIF. And we're down to the last couple of years on that. The, the debt on, on the Boulders Hotel itself actually is paid off now. So we, we don't see that anymore. Electric revenue for the FEMA project, that's going to mature in '23. So we just got a couple more years on that. But then we also have this electric revenue debt for our last large upgrade. And that, that'll go through '28. We got $530,000 left on that. Fire truck, we, seems like we forever have a, a bond outstanding on a fire truck. And at least that, that allows us then to continue to have yearly contributions that come from the city end as well as the town shows. So we allocate the payment of that debt service. And then the sewer, SRF, see the, the total on that, $257,000. And we are well positioned now to be able to make those, make those debt service payments. So we're, we're doing fine. The one that I struck off there, internal TIF, that's just a note that we are making that last payment to ourselves on, on the TIF this current fiscal year. So they'll, they'll have no outstanding TIF debts. So we talked about this before, we actually need to incur some more debt than prior to November. Those notes, there are constitutional debt limit. We, we can have 5% of our total valuation. It could be $7.47 million worth of, of general obligation debt. We have about 10% of that, $763,000. Because really, the only thing that's general obligation is the streets and, and the fire truck. That Sack Beach, the little Sack Beach one there is technically a general obligation also. Any questions, any comments on debts?
Sound pretty good as far as.
Insurance costs would be the, be the next page. I guess the, the good news on this is, is really consistency, that we do not see any, any real large fluctuations on insurance costs. The top box there shows ICAP. And we, our current premiums were about $44,000. Put in about a $2,000 increase, but that, what that is, is that it's just increased value. So we, we'll see our Public Works Building come on and the, and the Lagoon Buildings. So a couple thousand dollars extra in, in property costs there. Work comm, we saw a substantial decrease in that last year. Where our, our mod factor is now .83 and it had been well over, over 1. And that dropped it significantly. So we would expect the mod factor to remain the same this year. We just met with the loss control guy here within the past couple of weeks. So we expect it to remain the same. Of course, they go up depending on wages also. So it'd get a little increase based on wage and then also we would continue to expect to receive the rest. So projected cost of work counts about $14,000. And then you get to, to health insurance. And just a couple of notes on that, that our, our renewal is January 1st. And so we just renewed and it went up that 1%. So for budget purposes, you'll see the, the top section there is six months underneath that 1% addition. But, and then at the bottom, we do have some type of a projected cost increase for January through June of '22. And that is just a gue, an estimate about what that increase might be. So we always do try to increase that pretty, our budget that pretty high. See, I put in a 12% estimated increase there. Just some comments on our, on our health insurance. We, we now have two, two retirees who are still on the policy. So Lambus and then Royce, Kim and are, are on the policy. And they can continue to remain on our policy. They pay their own premiums, but they can continue to remain on that until they're eligible for Medicare. See what, just the bottom lines, there are total current insurance costs for what we budgeted last year, $236,000. And this year, we'll budget about $218,000. And that has a lot to do with what the actual cost ended up coming in at for workers' comp. It was substantially less. On page 22, I included an update again of our, of our capital improvements plan. And there are a few highlighted boxes there. And those would be the only changes from what we had reviewed before. So the highlighted one that says $7,000 front desk software and a receipt printer. We had at one point talked about mass texting, that's actually incorporated in that. But Kay and I have been doing a lot more checking on this front desk software and a different type of receipt management. And I think there's some real efficiencies that we can do with some, through this receipt management. And it's a way that we can offer some enhancements with technology. It allows us to do a lot more with credit card and debit card payments for other things, other than utility bills. And looks like we can work with that to accept in-house payments that way. And we currently don't accept debit or credit card payments. So this does take a little bit of an update to our, to our system. Not necessarily ready to pull the trigger on this thing and, and, and order it quite yet. We're still working through, through a bunch of questions, but I think you'll be hearing more about that. The other highlighted thing there, you see Community Center is, is proposed then to be in the budget. And, and as we work through some budget numbers, I actually changed that a little bit. So it's, the number would be $750,000. That basically, the timing of the way construction works out is that it likely has some construction in this upcoming fiscal year and then the following fiscal year, then also if it, if it occurs through the entire summer.
So that's why you've upped it because of the TIF income?
Yeah, so it would, I have it that it would change to $750,000. But only showing a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in private fundraising as well as a bunch of, of grant monies. So whatever we put down there as an expense would just have a revenues offsetting it also. So I just want to have something in, in the budget and knowing that the, the revenues would offset those expenses. Makes sense?
Personally, so I'm still not quite sure why it's going for $575,000.
But just thinking about timing on the, on the construction, you know? Because, and knowing that there's always some significant costs associated with project startup. The, actually, you know, so whether it's, whether it's the design or whether it's purchasing land, whether it's getting those things done beforehand, that would likely occur during this budget year.
I still says, I'm going to tell you.
Yeah.
Mine does too.
They, they all, they all will for now. As we talk through, I've continued to do some work on budget over the weekend and made some changes over time. We had talked about wanting to make sure that, that there was some beginning of fund to set aside for wastewater treatment plant demolition. So this would just suggest $20,000. Has half of it coming from sewer fund and half of it from sales tax. And then another big one would be a set aside for street construction. We would not propose to do a street construction project this budget year. But this would propose to set aside $100,000. And actually, would be $50,000 of that then coming from the general fund. So that'll be a, a proposal that, that we'll talk through and the impact that that has on the general fund.
Especially if we, we have some issues on the streets apparently. How much, how much did each one of those streets cost us, do you remember? Because I need to go back and look it up.
I gotta pull this up.
Is there any way you can go back to, on the contractor, cut it out and cut it down and look at it?
They are steel coat streets and the, and the rocks come off.
But they have been better than that before. They were, they were not the best.
Okay.
You could even ride your bike over and then it was loose. And they said, oh, it packed down and packed down. But I don't think it ever did pack down.
Yeah, all summer long, you just keep your foot out there.
Yeah. I don't know what they did wrong, but.
And we were so happy with the feather thin, feather thin overlay, we thought we were getting blacked out. We were all happy, but then it was time we were getting grabbed.
Yeah, when they cleaned it up, they cleaned it up and threw that money away.
Yeah, you got some, you got some too. You're welcome.
So I don't know, it's just something I think we need to, to look at.
What on earth that, have, go and ask them.
We can, we can discuss with them about, about the expectations.
Fix it. Tell them to fix.
Oh, and the, I'll interrupt you here, but the cost factor, I mean, they still came up and milled it. They still came up and overlaid it. So the milling machine was there and milled this much, it wouldn't have cost that much more to do this. And they still laid this much asphalt, it wouldn't have cost that much more to do this. Then they came and put the chip seal on it. And then you guys came up and tried to clean it up twice with the wore-out street chopper, by the way. And now we still have a problem, so.
We're saving for that too.
Huh?
We're saving for that too.
You need to, because that's been shot for 25 years, I will agree. But.
Spent quite a bit of money on it the last couple of years to fix it up.
And not use it because it don't work half the time. But anyway.
Actually, it's been used more in the last two years than it was ever used previously.
And it spreads a lot, we're not going to go there. But, but the money you saved on the street, you didn't save anything.
It gets used a lot better and I'll defend that ever because it was not used before.
We only got one bid, didn't we, when we did that?
Yeah, oh yeah, there was, there was one contractor.
It's tough to find the contractors.
It's been a tough year for contractors, you know? And even that guy that was doing those streets, he had like, how many trucks did he have sitting?
Eleven trucks and he couldn't find drivers.
Eleven trucks he couldn't find drivers for. I mean, COVID has not helped any of that. I'm not making an excuse for, for the job. But all of those companies are under duress because they don't have enough employees and they, and.
And I, and I can relate to that too.
COVID has just knocked them silly, so.
Just that we're paying taxes like everybody else, they got a new street and we got a crappy street.
I understand that.
And nobody will acknowledge it until tonight. I heard you say that you didn't. And that's the first that anybody's acknowledged, yeah, we're a problem.
We knew we had some problems.
I think there is a problem.
Publicize it. We weren't sure how to fix it.
And still not sure.
Still not sure.
But we are going to look into it and see.
Leave it break up and then a couple of years when you get money, fix it right, go asphalt it. Because it might take a couple of years for it to break up. It's just that it's a pain in the butt, whatever they look at in our yards.
I've, I've made it through year one. And any comments on, on year two, other than the, the highlight on year two about the community center? Would just have that be the remaining half of the project, $700,000.
In year two?
And again, just the, the notion that if.
Year two is supposed to be what?
So the total's 1.45 between the, the two years.
Okay, all right, okay, got it.
Sorry to, to be confusing.
That's okay, I got it. I caught up with you.
Again, if, if it's, if that item is included in year one of the capital improvements plan, it would be included in the draft of the budget that we would, we would go through next, next week. I want to go through things pertaining to property taxes then. Some of these things we went through last week too. On page 27 shows valuations of all the communities in the county. And you can see we highlighted Lakeview and the increase in valuation this year is about 10, 10 and a half percent. And again, that's, that, the EVAPCO plant has rolled off a TIF and went onto the, onto the general assessment rolls. And that's the, that's the biggest amount of the, of the increase. If, if that wouldn't have happened, our, our percent increase would be about 2.6%. But then we look at those things pertaining to property tax and ultimately determining what our maximum tax dollars would, would be. That's that new process that we, we need to have a second public hearing to, to advertise the maximum property tax dollars. On page 28, that just showed what the property taxes would be if we would, again, keep the total tax levy the same at $8.45. But we want to take a look at, at some different options which would likely decrease that, the total levy. If you look on page 29. And that will, will be able to compare the, the general fund dollars. Three scenarios there in the middle of the page. Keeping the general fund, fund dollars the same as the current year. And you can see what, what happens to the, to the levy. Total levy goes down by 62 cents over there on the right, on the right hand. If we had increased the, increased total dollars by 2%, that has the total levy decreasing by 49 cents over there on the right side again. And then the bottom section shows that if the total tax levy remains the same, but that, that's where we would really be, you'd be increasing revenue about 10% because the assessment went up 10%. I want to show you this. Take one of those and pass it around there again.
So, because you have to do fund dollars instead of percentages.
Gold dollars now, yeah.
Yeah, so how does that second scenario where you're increasing it by 2%?
And the only thing that's significant about 2% is, that's mentioned in, in that, in the new law. That says you can increase property tax dollars by 2%. Okay? And if it's 2% or less, you can still approve the, the budget with a simple majority of the council. If it's more than 2%, it takes a super majority of the council to approve your budget. You know, the practical implication is not much, you know? If we wanted to, to increase more than that, where you could, but that's just, I picked that number because that's what's in that, in the state law.
But what's confusing about it is the levy. So, you know, because you have the levy, which is a percent. And then you have, now we have, the state has changed it to this dollar thing.
Yep.
So I, I guess I'm trying to put them both together. So if the general fund dollar is the same as the current year, I understand the levy stays the same. But what kind of percentage is that?
About 10%.
About 10% because of the valuation.
If the levy is the same as what it is right now, our, our valuation went up 10 and a half percent, it'd be 10, 10 and a half percent.
Okay, I see, because of valuation, all right, got it.
Yep. There's some papers right by your right hand, if you, if you pass those down.
Do you want one? Do you want two? Do I want one?
Yeah, that's probably more. Because what it, what I had done a lot over the weekend is, is mocked up a lot of things in the, in the budget about what this is actually a. in the, in the budget about what, this is actually a first mock-up of what the budget would look like. And then you could see by fund, revenues versus, versus expenses there on that, on the first page, and kind of deal about whether, whether the revenues cover the proposed expenses for the, for the fund. And then, on the second page, those revenues and expenses go into the fund balance worksheet. So what I really wanted to get to was, what's the anticipated fund balance of the general fund? So that you know what you're working with as you, as you decide about property tax things. So you see the general fund that kind of in the upper left-hand part? So again, this fund balance thing takes our actual beginning balance on 7-1, that's an actual number. We've reestimated the revenues and expenses for the, for the current budget year, so they are more accurately reflecting what's going on. So you take the beginning balance plus the revenues minus the expenses, who give you the projected ending balance then as of June 30 of '21. And then that rolls over to be the beginning balance of FY '22, adding in revenues and subtracting the proposed expenses, and you see what the, what the fund balance is. Fund balance there is still proposed to be 730,000, which is a very substantial fund balance. Okay? If you flip to that little tab that I attached to the front though, these are just the assumptions that are, that are made out of that. That the general fund property tax dollars would increase by that 2%. So that's the number that I chose to incorporate in this model. That that increases by 2%. So whereas our total tax levy for years has been $8.45, this would reduce that tax levy to 794. And a couple other assumptions. We've talked about setting money aside for streets and having that come out of the general fund, and this would set $50,000 aside for streets. And then $25,000 from the general fund for the Housing and Development Authority, and another 25 from lost. So, anyway, those are, those are assumptions that are certainly open to being changed, but if we want to look at that fund balance number out of the general fund, those are the assumptions that are made.
So when you made those two assumptions, those two figures on this little tab, they're going to show me the ending where?
That's still at the end of next budget year, that tells you what the ending budget, the ending fund balance would be.
The 730?
730, yeah.
And that's with those two expenses figured in?
And incorporates that, yeah.
Okay.
That's if we leave it at 8.45.
No, that's, that's a 790.
That's lower in the tax rate.
794.
We could go to 794 and still do everything we're going to do.
Yeah, I mean, you can.
We've already jacked up the sewer rates for years, I think this is a break for the public.
I think so also.
I do too, I just want to make sure we can cover the streets that we have to fix.
If you can look at that, at that front page again. And that just will tell you that from the, from the general fund, projected revenues 1.088 million, and the projected expenses 1.082 million, still generates revenues a little bit in excess of expenditure, so it doesn't spend down that, fund balance at all, if you can spend down the fund balance if you'd like to.
I see, I get it.
I think we can, but I think we should, and we look at that. I think we owe it to the public to do what we can.
I guess, is that where you'd really like to be though? Is it 2%? Or would you want to look at something even bigger reduction than that?
I think we want to go cautiously, so I would like to, I'm in favor of lowering it, I just don't want to cut ourselves short with things that are even...
Might help with housing if we lower the taxes.
Actually, actually, the guy told us, with this housing thing, just to speak a little bit, some of us had attended a presentation in Wall Lake from a guy that would like to do, he's kind of working with the county, and it gets kind of complicated, and he's wanting to use this Iowa tax credit thing, and they have to do so many homes to get that, and rather than doing six in a community, correct me if I get off track here Scott, six in a community, which maybe we can't afford to do, if they do like one, two, you know, like in a town, then you get to the six in that.
In a county.
That contractor then qualifies for that State of Iowa tax incentive, it's a State of Iowa tax incentive. So, listened to him, and then he came and visited here last week with Scott, and I came and sat in on it for a little while. I've talked to a couple developers or local contractors about it, and a local supplier. I think there's a, I think there's a path there, you know? I just want the playing field the same, whether they're coming from out of state or whether they're coming from local, I want everybody to have the same opportunity. But I, I feel like we're kind of on a good path with this, we can kind of start small. Anyway, there's, there's been quite a bit of research being done on this.
So Vicky, if we develop this program, are we talking about stick building homes? The reason I'm saying this, you know, they've talked about these prison homes, I'm not really a big fan of any of that, but I...
You know, I'm not really so much now either, and I kind of was in the beginning, but, you know, talking with the supplier, you know, they, they don't purchase anything locally really, you know, and then they bring the completed house in, and of course, you have to put your own basement in, you have to put your own garage in, so obviously, those might be local things, but, you know, and I think this supplier felt like they kind of cut their legs off, because we can't compete with them, because they get cheap labor from the prison and we can't compete. And I want it to be a level playing field, so I, you know, so yeah, these would be, but they have to be within a certain price range in order to get that tax incentive, and to me...
215,000 or less.
215?
Or less, and, and if we're looking to try to help Evapco employees, we're looking for people to move in here for families. You know, you saw somewhere, I just saw on that housing thing, how much two kids in a, in a, in a household brings into the school, you know? So there's just, there's lots of advantages to try to get this going, and 215 or below is tough, you know? But I'm here to tell you, they're doing it, because they're, they're, they're working with this, I, one of the great things, and I don't know who to give credit to, but this Iowa tax incentive that the State of Iowa is using, has brought contractors out of other states into Iowa to build. So, there's a lot of good things that have been done on the state level. So, you know, if we tell the community that we want to help with housing, then we need to step up and help with housing. And everybody thinks, go out and buy 15, 20 acres and put up new development, well, that's easier said than done, in the first place, it's hugely expensive, in the next place, you can't hardly find any land, and in the third place, they're not going to build homes for 215,000 or less. You're going to see more, more 300, 400, 500,000 homes out there, which isn't a bad thing, but I'm just saying, if what we're trying to do right now is focus on trying to get some families...
Young families.
We need to look at this, because Evapco is complaining all the time that they need housing.
And we have no problem selling houses like that for people who want to come in and retire, and have the amenity of the lake and stuff, but it's to get young families looking for...
Exactly, exactly. So...
I guess I was surprised there's as many properties that are out there, that, that we would, I would never have thought that.
That many vacant lots, yeah.
And there's even a few more, I think. We've done some research on, or working with one, one couple of property owners, but I think at this point in time, they're going to be a little bit more expensive than we want to do first, or start for. So, I hope the council will give it sincere consideration. The more people that live here, the better it is for everybody.
Look to page 31 here, just real quick. And know that this, this is the public notice that runs in the paper about establishing our maximum tax dollars. And that number that have in there is, is that 2% increase in tax levels. So, do I, I guess if we, unless we hear anything different, we might proceed along that line. Remembering that this is the maximum amount of tax that you could ask for. If we get into this discussion a lot more, and you say, well, I'd like to lower the tax rate even more and utilize some of the fund reserves, you can lower it, you just can't increase it from that amount. Is that clear to everybody? Everybody on board with that? We need to have a resolution.
Resolution 2106. I would think we want a motion on 2106 with the levy being 794. If we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make it, sorry.
We'll call.
Sting?
Yes.
Well, yes.
Smaller.
Yes.
Done.
Yes.
Dale, that was the most important thing we're doing tonight.
You didn't, you know, I mean, you made it here for it.
Yeah.
Crowd goes wild.
Okay, do we have a administrator report?
Not much, just again, we got special budget meeting, it'll be next Monday at 7 here.
Northwest Iowa League?
Northwest Iowa League is this Thursday, and it's up at SAC City at the, at the SAC Community Center, the rec center up there. Who is available to go to this one for, it's a scholarship auction on Thursday night? John, you, you available? Anybody else?
I don't, I haven't.
Uh-oh, crickets.
I'll talk to him later, I gotta see what's going on for my dad.
All right.
Anybody have anything else?
Just my, my last thing, just to start letting you know already, I got a vacation planned, February 18th through the 26th. And, so that will be potentially seven days of work, but we'll make something work out so we'll be ready for the next council meeting, which will be the following Monday.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second it.
You can adjourn.
I would talk to my board if I could have driven by and given it a gear and kept it on.